For members of the public who were there near the door, you know that we were in an executive session, so we'll be continuing that and then go into our regular meeting so that you'll understand where we are.
The mic is on.
Is this mic not on? How close do I have to get? Okay. So, we need to make a motion to convene to public session. Recommended motion that the Board of Education convene to public session and act on the grievance filed by the Fairfield Custodians Maintenance Local 1779 of Council Number Four, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Calabrese, do I have a second? Ms. Pitco? If not, all in favor, please raise your hand to return to executive session.
No return.
To return to public session. That's what the motion is here, so that's what's the recommended motion on your agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous? Okay. Just for the record, Ms. Lou McCormick did join us for the tail end of the discussion. She did not participate in the discussion, made no comment at all, she was just sitting here. And for the public, we went a little bit long because we take our responsibility seriously to consider all of the information provided to us and have full discussion before we make a decision, and so thank you for your patience. The recommended motion coming out of the executive session is to deny the grievance. The Board of Education hereby moves to deny the grievance submitted by the union and to uphold the decision of the administration to terminate the employee who is the subject of this proceeding. Do I have a motion? Ms. Pitco, do I have a second? Ms. Maxon Canelli? We've had all the discussion. If not any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and I assume that you'll be abstaining. Please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Ms. Maxon Canelli, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed? Ms. Carnell, abstentions. Ms. Lou McCormick. Six, no, wait, seven, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah, six, one, one. Sorry for chairing and being temporary secretary. Mrs. Gerber will be here shortly, she's at a school event. Okay, so now we need the motion to adjourn, that this special meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patton, Ms. Pitco, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It is unanimous, which is eight oh. Somebody mad, absent? Okay, so now before I convene the next meeting, the regular meeting, we do have to change a tape in the machine, so just a little bit of patience while we do that. Thank you very much, and yes, Mr. Vento, this eventually will get to you in writing.
Thank you.
2016. Present is Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Mark Patton, Ms. Donna Carnell. We expect Mrs. Gerber back from a school event at some point. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Tricia Pitco, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Canelli, and Mr. John Llewellyn. We also have our student representatives here, but we record who's attending from the board, so if I could ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a full agenda tonight, and so I hope that we can have efficient discussions so that we can get through all of the items. So first, we'll start with our student reports. Mr. Nene and Mrs. Frango from Ludlow, who wishes to go first?
So, it is a very busy week for the seniors. Another round of college applications are due this Friday, the 15th, and internship information has just come out, registration recently closed last Friday, and now seniors are getting the opportunity to pick the available positions that's provided by Ludlow to their list in hopes of receiving those internships for later this year. The final steps for us would be to submit an essay, an optional resume, and just a parent guardian complete registration document. And then, for the whole school, we have club photos taking place on the 27th and 28th, and they're photographed sometime in between these two days. It takes about five, 10 minutes, so it's not a disruption to the classes. And mid-year student surveys have been started to be administered in classes as we approach the end of the first semester. The surveys allow for students to critique the teachers anonymously, give their suggestions and such. And how the survey works is teachers kind of get away to personalize their own survey. They get to pick two questions from an instruction category and one question from a relationship category, and then the students just answer these questions, and the teachers use these surveys to reflect on their teaching for the semester and as well as what they could improve on.
Thank you. Since we last met, the Candlelight Concert took place at Fairfield-Ludlow High School, and it was a great success as per usual, and very crowded. Winter sports are in full swing. Boys' basketball played in the Holiday Tournament at Fairfield University, and they had a very crowded, very enthusiastic game against Prep. And we also had our badminton and volleyball tournaments on this past Friday, which were very fun, I was in it. Some of the students regretted that both were on the same day, as usually they're on separate days, and so they can have the opportunity to participate in both. Midterms are coming up, every student's favorite season, and the National Honor Society is going to freshman homerooms to let them know how midterms work at Ludlow, and they've done so to great success so far.
Thank you. Questions for our representatives from Fairfield-Ludlow High School? Ms. Carnell?
I just wanted to say you correct, the winter concerts, amazing, but so are all the other concerts through the year. They're really wonderful.
So, Ms. Agrello and Ms. Schuster from Ward High School, Fairfield-Ward High School?
Hi, since we didn't see you guys before, Happy New Year. We also had our annual holiday music concert, also called Carillon. We had a performance for the middle school, Tomlinson and Woods. We also had two evening performances and two day performances for in-school. It went very well, everyone loves it, and congratulations to the music department. We also had our A Week Club Photos last Wednesday, and we're continuing B Week tomorrow. We also have midterms coming up, January 21st, so all the teachers are handing out study guides, getting us prepared, making sure we know everything so we're not nervous during the test. So recently, Ward and Ludlow had a wrestling match, of which Ward won, congratulations to a few of my friends on that team. Last week, on January 6th, we had the College Panel that was open to sophomores and juniors, of which six college representatives from the Administration's Office came and talked to us about how the application process went, and, you know, answered some of the questions that students had. It was open for both Ludlow and Ward students, and it was hosted at the Ward Auditorium, and it was fairly crowded, so I'm happy to say that many students are very enthusiastic about, you know, finding what they want to be, like what they want to do. Later that week, January 8th, there was a practice lockdown, specifically in the cafeteria, lobby, and library area. It went well, there were just some minor adjustments, kind of like where kids would be placed, you know, in the library per se, there was, some kids were going to different rooms, and it was generally getting a bit crowded, but the teachers worked through that, and, you know, we know what to do for the next time. Also on the College Panel, what I didn't mention before was the introduction of job shadowing, which our counselors and teachers have recently opened up to discussion, but really, this is giving us a one-day experience in any future fields of interest, so we're looking forward to that.
Questions for our representatives from Fairfield-Ludlow? Mr. Patton?
Ward.
Sorry, Fairfield-Ward High School.
This is to all four of you and to the headmasters and musical directors of both schools, but this year I finally had the opportunity, I always had conflicts, to attend both Candlelight and the Carillon concerts at both schools. And these are my, I'll be biased, these are my favorite musical events in both schools all year. I think they're different, but they're unique, and they just offer a tremendous experience for the students, and they are the most unique thing you've ever seen or heard in high school music, so if you've never gone, next year in December. Thanks.
But don't wait till the last minute to get your tickets. Any other questions? Mr. Calabrese?
No question, but I just want to echo the same comments. Fantastic job by both schools at their concerts. First time I've been in Fairfield, 12 years, first time I actually got to attend, and they were wonderful, so congratulations.
Thank you. Feel free to slip out through the crowd or stay with us as long as you wish. On to item number four, public comment. During this period, the Board will accept public comment on all items pertaining to this meeting's agenda, so has anybody from the audience wished to come forward to make a comment to us? Please come forward, state your name and address.
I'd like to make a comment, comments regarding items eight, which is the minutes, as well as item 6B, and I'd like to talk about them together because it's related to procedural matters. I'd like to ask the Board to refrain from extended discussion of the minutes. We had in the past few months some unanimous approval, I was elated, but last month we reverted to a half-hour discussion of the minutes, which I personally felt did not add a lot, so I'd like to ask you to refrain from discussion and to vote to approve, not to reject or to abstain. Regarding item 6B, in your discussion of the Holland Hill specs, I assume you've all done your homework, I know we in the audience certainly have, please refrain from raising issues as if new, asking for information which has been shared previously, and from revisiting debunked information, i.e. regarding the 100 supposedly excess capacity at Riverfield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? I see nobody rising, so, okay, on to the presentations. The presentation of the Superintendent's Proposed 2016-17 Operating Budget, and so this has normally been a PowerPoint presentation, and then eventually we hand out the books in whatever order Dr. Title wants to do it, so the floor is now yours.
Thank you. It wouldn't take a minute to set this up. It's not as long as they have been in the past, owing to the long agenda that we have in front of us, but I will say that, as you know from the budget development process that has been laid out here for several years, this process begins in September, discussion in public with the Board, October, November, December on topics. The staff works very hard on this, the principals, the teachers bring forward all their ideas, we scrutinize them very carefully, go through a very rigorous process of vetting all the requests, and the staff here in the office, led by Ms. Muncell, do a fabulous job of crafting it all into a single document for public consumption. So after I do the brief PowerPoint, we'll take a break and distribute. We have agreement from people that normally receive these, that we're cutting down on the number of paper copies that we're distributing because we're trying to go green and save money and time, and so we have a process for that, and we will try to do it in an orderly fashion. So there are two copies of the budget for each PTA, so if someone's here from the PTA, we get you one or two, depending on if there's one or two of you here, and then each principal will get one as well. Board of Selectmen or Board of Finance members, we have a copy if you're here, and of course we have one for all the board members and for the press, so we'll do that afterwards. So if you just give us a minute, we're going to set this up, and I'm going to go through an overview of the budget, and then we'll pass them out.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just going to use this.
I think we're good to go. So this is intended as an overview, plenty of opportunity for Q and A and further depth on this, so this will give you an overview of what made it and what my recommendation is that we asked the town for this year. So just to review, that this budget is all in support of the Board's mission, which was approved about a year and a half ago, that was the basis of the district's improvement plan. The key words in my mind, among others, in this mission are ensure and every student, and that's what we're attempting to do with this budget, is get closer to the mission. Slightly more specifically, without this budget, obviously, we would not be able to offer the really fabulous program that we have, not just in academics, but in all the other areas that you also heard about from the students, and it allows us to maintain and continue to improve our school system, which is one of the reasons that we're a very attractive option for families moving to Southern Fairfield County. So we think we play a key role, not just for the students who are actively going to the schools and their families, but also to the entire town, and I think that people in town recognize that, and this budget makes that happen. So, do a quicker version of historical information than I normally do, and just to update some slides that you've seen before, which gives you a comparison of our per pupil expenditures over the past 10 years compared to the state. And the Fairfield per pupil expenditures are in red, and the state average per pupil expenditures are in silver, and if you go back to '04-'05 and follow that through, you can see pretty consistently Fairfield has been above the state average, and starting in '09-'10 and heading in the direction of '13-'14, which is the last audited figures, you can see that we're just about right on the state average. So over these 10 years, the state has gone up 42 percent, Fairfield's gone up 21 percent in terms of per pupil expenditures. Statewide, this has caused our rank to drop over the past 10 years. In 2004-2005, of 169 cities and towns, Fairfield was 20th in per pupil expenditure. In the last audited year, in '13-'14, we are 81st of 169. We're actually about $7 per student higher than the state average, and that does not take into account the sort of Fairfield County cost of living factor, which would probably, if you were to deflate it for that, would make us actually below the state average. So we have maintained and improved this school system while being very efficient with our spending. In Southern Fairfield County, our neighboring towns, the average per pupil expenditure in Southern Fairfield County is about $18,300, that's in green in the middle. The other towns are all in orange, and we have been pretty much consistently in the same spot for as long as I've been here, the second lowest per pupil expenditure in Southern Fairfield County, and the average is about 15 percent higher than our per pupil Our enrollment, this goes back to '03-'04, so this is quite a longer period of time. You can see what's happened is the enrollment peaked in 2011-2012, this is the total pre-K to 12 enrollment. The five years leading up to that, most of the state was going down, ours was going up. It flatlined for about three years, and now it's been on a kind of a steady decline of about 90 students a year, and next year we're projected to have 9,960 students enroll. And of course, that's the basis for the budget, and we adjust our staff according to the enrollment. And one last historical slide, what has our budget increase been over the past seven years? Year by year, this is what the town has authorized, not what the Board requested, so over the past seven years, and a couple of the years predate me, the average budget increase has been just around 2 percent a year. So as we went forward to '16-'17 and looked at our budget priorities, there are four of them. The first was to support, to the extent possible, the second year of the district improvement plan, this is year one, year two is next year. We wanted to increase our investment in maintenance and technology as we continue to need more investment in those areas, to take a look at all of our account lines and try to adjust them to reflect historical expenditures, and of course, fund all our contractual obligations, but also the growing list of state and federal mandates, a page we continually update, and eventually we're going to run out of room, as you will see shortly. So here they come. It started out about four or five years ago with the new teacher administrator evaluation plans that you've heard about, switching over to the Common Core, high stakes assessment, all of which has had a major impact on our work, and then the other things started coming in. Some of these you will recall from previous years, that all have taken either a significant amount of staff time or real dollars out the door. The most recent ones that are new this year are just coming in now, and that is a mandate to train all teachers in restraint and seclusion, and also now to develop a framework for social emotional learning to be blended into our curriculum. So this bouncing ball list keeps going, notice how none of the balls ever bounce out in the other direction. As a reminder, because you can't hear this enough, there are four core strategies in the district improvement plan, and I'm listing them up here because we will match some of the improvements back to these core strategies. As I said, we are basing our budget on delivering the second year of the district improvement plan, so instructional program teams, strengthening instructional leadership, and appropriate levels of educational resources. So we are fortunate this year to be able to insert quite a few instructional program improvements, and we will be able to give an affordable budget after all of this, and I will show you why in about five minutes. So there's quite a long list, so this is good news, so if you weren't quite paying attention, this is a good time to perk up. So we'll be implementing next year a revised social studies curriculum, that'll be coming to the Board in the spring, middle school computer literacy curriculum is being revised, that is also coming to the Board in the spring, and as we discussed in the Board meeting in November, upgrading our middle school music keyboarding program and the expansion of Spanish to grade three. Both of those were mentioned as improvements for next year, and those are in the budget that I'm presenting to you. We have development going on of other areas, according to our plan, so we will be engaging in science, family consumer science, improving our offerings at the Waldorf Fitzgerald campus, individualizing that program for the needs of the students there, and beginning that development of the social emotional learning framework, because we have to get going in that because the state has told us to. I'm just going to put up some examples of the professional learning, that's a huge point of emphasis in the district improvement plan. This is not all of the professional learning that we're doing, but this will give you an idea of the kinds of professional learning that we have our staff, and this could be certified as well as non-certified staff, that we will be doing over the course of next year and that are in this budget. Those are the first five, and I could list many of them. We are making a big effort to strengthen the skills of all of our staff members in a wide variety of areas, and so these are some samples, and teacher leadership is a key component of that, and that is a core strategy in the district improvement plan, as is using technology and improving core literacy at the elementary level. In terms of educational resources, we have budgeted for a textbook in mathematics in grades K to five. This was a direct result of the Board meeting that we had, where board members showed a lot of interest in that, and a full examination of those options are underway, planning to come to you in April with something along those lines, and that is a pretty pricey item, but that is in the budget. We also, as you know from the discussion we had in November, finishing off the world language textbooks in the upper levels and social studies, we're able to fit in grades six to eight and some high school courses in here, but if we implement the mathematics textbook in grades K to five, we will not be able to absorb the social studies text or materials in grades K to five because the teachers all teach the same, the same teachers are teaching both, and we can't ask them to do both well, so we can get into that more, but that's why the social studies isn't on there, and the textbook account is very, very high in this budget as it is. And the enhanced language arts intervention resources, we talked about that one before, and enhancing the classroom libraries as part of our core literacy strategy, and also in concert with the middle school principals, we added some funds in for expanding clubs and activities in grades six to eight, and we put that in because in our district improvement plan, one of the measures we're using is student participation in extracurricular activities, and some years ago we had to scale that back due to a budget cut in 2011, and so this will enable the middle schools to offer more clubs and activities to more students. So that's in this budget. All these are going in. So the staffing piece of this, there are not huge changes in staffing in order to make all this happen. As you know, some of the initiatives do require additional staffing, which we talked about in the November meeting, elementary Spanish requires staff. We also told you about middle school reading, particularly at Tomlinson, the music program at the middle school, particularly because of the keyboarding, additional teachers because of the demand at the high school for more academic and elective classes, high school special education, a little bit in each high school. special education, a little bit in each high school there and then some pieces in speech and language, psychology and social work. It sounds like a lot, but because we're able to reduce staff at the elementary and middle school because of enrollment, the net of this entire page is one FTE. On the non-certified side, we continue to see additional need for non-certified staff for students with disabilities. The biggest piece to this is quite honestly, the growing community partnership program. More and more kids are going from the high school into the community partnership program and they require additional non-certified assistance. We're completing our contracting out of the grounds, so we're reducing the position there. The net increase on the non-certified side is 4.6. So, the overall staff increase, certified and non-certified, is 5.6. And given that our staff count is around 1,480, it's less than one-half of a 1 percent increase in staff. Additional resources, I told you, maintenance and facilities maintenance and technology. So, although it doesn't seem like it, we have always been under in snow removal costs, maintenance projects, painting, paving, student furniture, including some woefully falling apart cafeteria tables at the elementary level, grounds maintenance and repair. We just, we have 2 million square feet to maintain and we need to invest in it. And so, as we go through the budget, you'll see where those investments are. And in technology, another area where we're always playing catch-up, particularly with respect to, there's a Star Wars character if you're paying close attention down at the bottom. It will chase that butterfly in a second. Not to distract you from the main message, which is, this is Jan Bern's brilliance. I did not come up with this idea. Jan is terrific. She was the one up here helping me. So, anyway, these are our additional resource investments in technology that are very important for students and staff alike. So, the million dollar question or the 160-plus million dollar question is, how can we afford all this? And the answer very simply is savings and health insurance. A phrase I never thought I would ever say in front of this board and that you as a board probably never thought you would ever hear. But we've been working very hard to examine the possibility of changing out our health insurance to a plan just recently available to all municipalities and boards of education. And through tremendous work on the part of some of the leaders here in the central office, I'll call them out, Ann Leffert and Doreen Munsell, but also tremendous work by our leaders of the bargaining units. I will call out Bob Smoller, who did work well beyond the call of duty, not just with his own bargaining unit, but with all the other bargaining units. I am really pleased to tell you that we have made a major savings there. Now, this is not the first time we've tried to make movement on health insurance. You know, over the years, we've done a number of things to try to do that, but nothing really comes close to approaching what we're able to accomplish on a relatively short period of time here. It's called the State of Connecticut Partnership Plan 2.0. You can Google that, it'll show up on the Comptroller's Office website. We'll be changing all eligible employees, in other words, if you qualify for health insurance now, over to this plan. This will result in equivalent coverage for the employees and substantial savings for the employees and for the school district. Because whenever we save, you know, a dollar, the employees save whatever their premium cost share is. So, depending on what your premium cost share is, you share in the savings with the district. The features of this plan, all employees will actually be in the exact same insurance plan. There won't be any variation. As long as you qualify for insurance, you will get the same coverage. Premium cost shares will not vary from what's in the contract, so whatever was negotiated is still in place. There is a mandatory wellness program that includes incentives as well as penalties, which not only keeps costs down, but actually will result in healthier employees, which is actually more important. It functions like a fully insured plans in that the rates are set by the state. At the end of the year, your specific claims do not factor in to the rates the way they do now on our self-insured plan with only 1,400 members. We actually pool our 1,400 members into the 200,000 state employees. And so, you get much lower rate increases. They've averaged about 5 percent a year over the past four years. And it's much less volatility because three or four very high claims will not drive the rates up, which is what we've been experiencing and what you saw in the presentation from Aon in December. We go over more details on this when, you know, the time comes. I'm sure you'll have questions about it. The savings look like this. If we were going to budget in the current plan, the self-insured plan, you saw it from Aon last time, we were looking at about a $2 million increase in this line. Changing will actually decrease this account by $1.5 million. This is cost avoidance of $3.5 million. I'm letting that sink in. So, remember when Aon presented and we showed you a number? This is what we're going to have to add to the budget. We had one more month of experience. It didn't change it a heck of a lot. So, at this point, we have done the calculations. Aon has done the calculations, the town's done the calculations, Doreen's done the calculations and we're very confident in the way we're budgeting this. So, we have made a major shift in this cost factor for the district. So, as a result, drum roll, the budget we're requesting is 165 million and change. It is a 2.59 percent increase over 2015, '16. So, we are going to get all of those improvements in the budget that you saw on the first five or six slides with the reduction in the health insurance and of course, with the shifting around of the staff. I'm recommending the board approve a budget of 2.59 percent for '16, '17. And then, you've seen these in the past. This is how it plays out in our major categories. The dollar increase is the middle column and then the increase as a percent of the budget is on the right. And you can see that the benefits, which is where the health insurance is, instead of its normal plus number in there, is a minus number of 0.86 percent. The tuition, we've talked about, that's a swapping out of tuition for instructional services. And where we're really sinking our resources in this year are in the three numbers that start just from the bottom. Capital, supplies, texts and materials and instructional services. Fees and fees are just in there, but they're tiny. So, we're really sinking money into areas that will have a direct impact on students and teachers. And for all of that, you end up at 2.59 percent. Or the pie view is, you know, even with the shifts, as much as we are increasing our allocations in certain areas, the vast majority of our money is still staff salaries and benefits. It will always be that way. We're a labor-intensive business. Even with these improvements in capital and supplies, you can still see they make up a very small fraction of the overall budget. And my last point is that we are continued as a school system, as a leadership team to delivering and improving this educational system to try to ensure achievement for every student, as the board has stated so eloquently in its mission statement. And because we were able to use our resources efficiently over the past number of years, but of course, especially this year, we're able to bring these improvements forward in a fiscally responsible manner. I'm very proud of this school system. I'm proud to lead the school system and I think by approving this budget, we will take a giant leap forward and make us even, even stronger for the students and families in Fairfield. So, that's my story.
If you are an elementary-type person, principal or PTO, PTA person, Mike Cummings here will have books for you, middle school, to Meg Brice High School, Karen Parks, and we have others to distribute to other people that don't fit into those categories. So, I think we'll take a break. Phil, so we can do this?
Yes.
We'll take like a five-minute break to distribute the books?
Not a recess, but we're just taking a break. Although you made your presentation, is there anything else that you want to say before I go to the board for any questions they wish to have?
I'd just like to say that the PowerPoint and the budget itself will be up on the district website sometime between 9:00 PM and midnight. So, if people are interested in seeing the electronic version of both of those, that will be up there. Thank you.
I'll remind the board that our budget review process is that we more or less walk through the book from beginning to end and we'll start obviously with the revenue section and then the executive summary of expenses. Frequently, staff will refer to a line item in the other part of the book to show the backup for questions people have. And then, of course, we'll go through the line items to the extent that people have individual questions on the individual line items. The Q and A, the questions that are asked are generally answered in a written form or turned into a written form and posted on the website under budget. And the prior year's Q and As are generally on there as well. So, those of you who are looking at the budget, you might find it instrumental to look at the prior Q and As because you might find that you have your question answered because it's been asked in the vote in the past. And then, finally, the vote on the budget will be on January 28th. That's a Thursday. And because of the town charter, we do have to act before the end of the month and transmit the budget with, to the first selectman's office. So, there has to be a certain amount of time allowed for staff to be able to do that. And Jan Bern, where are you? There you are. Please raise your hands so people know that while the facts may be Dr. Title's, the creativity is yours. To the board. To the board with questions. We generally don't have too detailed questions at this meeting because there's a lot to absorb, but any initial questions that people have. Max and Connolly.
One very quick question is, will the bugs move on the online PowerPoint?
Yes. It's posted as a movie. There's two versions. So, those of you that are distracted by moving creatures on your PowerPoint, you can read the flat version.
Mr. Calabrese?
Just a comment, no question really. I'm very impressed with the budget at first look, besides the aesthetics of it. I'm looking forward to digging into it and again, I'm really excited about the savings that you guys were able to work out.
Other questions from the board on this side? Nobody on this side? Mr. Lou Allen?
Real quickly, in terms of moving to the state health plan, is that something the town is going to do in conjunction and is it a requirement?
So, the legislature passed this law that enables municipalities and boards of ed across the state to go to this if they choose, but it's not a requirement that both have to go. So, we can all go, make our own decision. The town is investigating this as well and they have to make an independent decision based on the mix of their population as to whether it makes sense for them. But if they decide not to go, we are still eligible to go.
And as a quick follow-up, so are there tails that we need to buy because we're self-insured? Is there a cost kind of built into this?
Yes, and I can go through that to show how we arrived at our budget figure. Essentially, what's going to happen is we've been talking every year about this hypothetical IBNR. What's it there for? What do we need it for? And it's always been sort of this accounting thing. We've argued about what's the right number. Now, we're actually going to use it. It's actually there to be used for this purpose. And so, we need to ensure that 6/30, 15 or shortly thereafter, we have enough money to pay the old claims. The new rates that are included here include the IBNR when this, if that other plan ever ends. So, we don't need to rebuild the IBNR. It's already built into the rates. So, we actually will run out the IBNR sometime after July 1.
Thank you.
With no other questions, two comments to the board. In making this decision, our consultant, it's the town's consultant that we use, Aon, although they will technically be losing business, I want to call out that they were very, very helpful in looking at and evaluating the plan and the change. And so, that's a testament of their professionalism and so, I want to thank them in that. And also, every union discussed the plan and voted to approve it and to accept this change in plan. And that was in part because of the good relationship that we have with our unions, but in also part because Bob Smoller, the head of the teachers' association, took it upon himself to kind of investigate it himself and to talk to both his union and all the other unions. And so, Bob, if you could raise your hand so we could say we owe a debt of thanks to you as well. So, we will move on for the rest of the business items and of course, meetings in January will be all about the budget.
Mr. Dreyer? I apologize for interrupting. The questions that we submit, should they be for a certain, are you going to stipulate a certain page range or in terms of next Tuesday's meeting?
Well, for next Tuesday, if you limit your questions to the executive summary, those pages, which include revenue and all expenses, it's not likely that we'll get through the executive summary, summary in one meeting, but we may. So, limit your questions to the executive summary documents first for Tuesday's meeting. Thank you. And as always, the staff appreciate it if the questions are asked by this Friday to give them Monday and Tuesday to work on answers, not 3 o'clock on Tuesday. That gives them only two hours to work on the answers. So, item 6A, approval of the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2016. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Ms. Putko? Discussion among the board on the capital non-reoccurring. That booklet was passed out at the last meeting. It looks like this. For those of you who may have brought it back with you, it's our practice not to duplicate the booklet once we hand it out to you. Any questions on the capital non-reoccurring? Any questions on the capital non-reoccurring? If there are none to the public, any public comment on the capital non-reoccurring, the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2016, '17? I sometimes have to wait to see whether people are getting up to walk out or whether they're coming up to walk forward. I see nobody coming forward and so, back to the board. If we're ready for action, please, all in favor that the Board of Education approve the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2016, 2017, raise your hand. We have unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. These move to the Board of Selectmen on January 27th at 4:30 PM.
The second item, 6B, approval of Holland Hill Educational specifications. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Holland Hill Educational specifications as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, preceded by Mr. Patton, discussion among the board.
I need to point out a couple of the changes that we made.
Okay, please.
Because the board had a discussion about this and so, we did make a couple of small changes in here. And we also did get from the consultant, the new enrollment projections for Holland Hill, which we have put at your table. The only two changes are on page four, we added the words install sinks in new classrooms. In researching previous ed specs, we sometimes have those in, sometimes we don't. It's generally something we do, so we just added that to be clear. And then, on the question about encapsulation not being acceptable on page five in red, exception PCB-impacted substrates, which are PCBs that are well below the surface and out of sight. So, that does give an option in there, but of course, that's all up to the EPA and the Department of Environmental Protection, as it turns out. But people had asked questions about that because we have done encapsulation. But people had asked questions about that because we have done encapsulation in the past on projects. So those are the only changes we made, and those were based on board input at the last meeting. Yes, so as you know, we retain the services of Malone and McBroom to do work for us on redistricting for racial balance, and part of their work is to do a new projection on enrollment for all the elementary schools. While they're scheduled to complete that work for the February board meeting, there was a quest at the last meeting, could we get them to just give us their Holland Hill school projections and maybe speed those up and get those out so we could see if there were any large changes in them? And while there's text explaining how he did it, and Mike Zubo will be here in February to go over any questions you have about methodology, the page three graph shows the projection out to 2026, which shows the school in '25, '26 being at 442 students.
Questions from the board? Questions from the board on Holland Hill Ed specs? Mr. Patton?
Through the chair, Dr. Title, on the projections that you just handed out, was there any reason in your summary from the consultants, why suddenly the spike in '22, '23 on up?
That's their work. I don't know. I didn't do the work. I mean, they're...
I think if you read the background...
It says it.
They have a statement, I think, on page...
Two.
Two.
Birth rates.
Yeah. They're just predicting birth rates are going up? Okay.
Well, they've actually started going up. 14 and 15 birth rates have been higher, so the trend is reversed.
Right. I see, right, I see the paragraph now. Sorry, we were just handed this today.
I mean, that's the hazard of just handing this out the same night. Again, people seem to want to see it, so if there'd been a large change...
We appreciate that the company got it here sooner than their staff worked it.
Later than ever.
Do you have other questions, Mr. Patton?
Just quickly, on the installing new sinks in, installing sinks in new classrooms, is that all new classrooms, or is that just for the, like, K-1st grade, 2nd grade?
No, that would be all new classrooms.
All new classrooms, okay.
When we build the addition, sinks will go in those classrooms, and then it's up to the principal to decide what...
They're used for.
What they're used for, which classes go in there.
We won't put Maxon Cannelly memorial sinks on the signs.
We have a strict naming policy that the board passed about five years ago.
But thank you for your comment. Other questions from the board? Other questions from the board on Holland Hill Ed specs? Mr. Lou Allen?
Couple of quick questions. Thank you. When we look at technology, I believe I'm on page seven. At the top of page seven, it says, "An essential component of this project is to provide electronic network access to every segment of the new building," and then it says in parentheticals, "addition." And then it says, "All instructional areas," with "all" underlined, "support should be provided with." So does that "all," is that addition only, or are we bringing the whole school up to spec on the technology?
That would be the whole school. Of course, we have that now in a lot of the schools. It's not necessarily new.
Right.
Right.
Okay. So the whole school will be wired to be compliant with...
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of ADA compliance and the like, is this school going to be, at what level of compliance is this school versus, you know, let's say our two most recent renovation slash construction projects?
I don't know that well enough. Sal, do you want to address that? Or Tom? I think this is a one-story school, so this is in pretty good shape.
Please state your name for the TV audience.
Sal Morbido, manager of construction, security, and safety for the Board of Ed. It would be compliant for all programs. We may end up, some of the bathroom facilities are not accessible right now. The bathrooms would be accessible in the additions, and to the extent that would be required by building code for other portions of the buildings. There are some building codes that would require renovation back into the existing building to provide compliance with some new sections applicable to the building.
Thank you. And then I guess the other question is, in terms of the add of sinks, is that something we have in our other renovations?
ADA compliance?
No, the sinks.
Oh, the sinks.
We have done that in other projects. Added sinks in the additions.
Like Riverfield addition all has sinks?
The Riverfield additions that have sinks? Yes, it does. I'm getting a nod.
Okay. It's very consistent. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Lou Allen?
Yes.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing no hands go up, this is a voting item, so we will go to the public for any questions that they may wish to ask or comments that they wish to make on the Holland Hill educational specifications. Anybody wish to come forward on this topic? You don't have to raise your hands, you just have to walk forward.
Comment.
Please state your name and address.
Really? Trudy Durrell, 64 Woodcrest Road. I would like to, once again, thank you for bringing Ed specs forward in a fairly timely manner, as some of the members of the public and Holland Hill parents in particular requested. And I would like to please ask that the board go ahead and approve, vote to approve these Ed specs as presented tonight. I think that we've been waiting a long time, and not too much has changed from the initial presentation, and I would ask on behalf of my fellow parents from Holland Hill that you consider approving these so that the project can move forward. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward to talk about the Holland Hill Ed specs? I see nobody coming forward, so back to the board. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Holland Hill educational specifications as enclosed. All in favor? Please raise your hand. Are you raising it? Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. This will, this item will be on a Board of Selectmen calendar fairly shortly. We got a good reception at the Board of Selectmen when it was presented in draft form, and so we hope that they will take early actions so we can continue to move this project forward.
Just to be clear, the Ed specs do not go for...
No, not the Ed specs, but...
After you vote on the next item, then we'll go forward, right? Now, we have nothing to bring to them.
Correct.
Okay. Maybe shortly.
Item 6C, approval of the proposed capital projects. That the Board of Education approve the proposed capital projects for 2016-17. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mr. Calabrese? Do I have comments that you wish to make, Mrs. Gerber? No? Mr. Calabrese? Questions from the board or comments from the board on the proposed capital projects? Hearing none. Out to the community, anybody from the public wish to come forward to talk about the proposed capital projects, which have a cover that looked like this? Then I have to have patience to see if people are leaving or whether they're coming down. I see nobody coming down, so therefore, back to the board for action. That the Board of Education approve the proposed capital projects for 2016-17. All in favor? Please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Now we have an item for the Board of Selectmen. On the same day. January 27th, we've been promised we'll be on that agenda, so just so people can mark their calendars. Do you mind if I go through this?
Please do.
Okay. So January 27th, there's a Board of Selectmen meeting. It begins at 4:30. I don't know where we'll be on the agenda. Usually that comes out a few days ahead of time. If any of these projects are approved by the Board of Selectmen, it will go on the agenda for the Board of Finance, and they meet on February 2nd. So it's the very next week, on Tuesday night. So once it gets approved, that gets inserted into the Board of Finance automatically onto their next agenda. If the Board of Finance approves these items, in whole or in part, whatever's approved by the Board of Finance, that has to be approved by the RTM. The RTM meeting in February is on Monday, February 29th. It's unusual. Normally, they meet on the 4th Monday, but they're meeting on the 5th Monday. And the Board, the RTM also holds committee meetings the week prior, and under a new way they do things, those committee meetings are only on Monday. All the committees meet as a whole and ask questions, and then break up into committees, and that will be on Monday, February 22nd. So that will be an evening. That will get posted. I don't know, it's often here. And again, any member of the public is welcome to attend any or all of those meetings, including the committee meetings. Frequently, the RTM's work is done in committee, and questions are asked, and often, public comment is accepted by the RTM at their committee meetings. So that's the schedule. If everything goes perfectly, and by the end of February, we'll be all set. If anything gets postponed, it just gets pushed back to whatever the next meeting of the boards are. That's the process.
So I encourage all of you to try and attend where you can, if not all of the meetings, whatever meetings you can. That's true for the board as well as members of the public. Onto item 6D, approval of Board of Education bylaw amendments. We'll take these one at a time, and so enclosure number two in your packet is for the first one, and that is a recommendation by Ms. Carnell. And so the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 5, Section 3, as shown on enclosure number two. You wish to make the motion, Ms. Carnell? Ms. Carnell made the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Lou Allen? Ms. Carnell, do you wish to make a comment?
I think my only comment is that unfortunately, times becomes, time becomes an issue in some of these meetings, and things have continuously gotten pushed back. So I thought if we kind of put a time limit on it, it would help making sure they get on the agenda.
Mr. Lou Allen? As the second of the motion, you get to make a comment if you wish.
Thank you. No, I think it's important that if three board members request an item be placed on the agenda, that it be placed on the agenda. You know, it's also not inconsistent with the ability of three board members to call a, I guess, a special meeting under state statute. I think that this is something that a lot of other districts have. They don't need to have it formally because the practice is, if one or two members ask to have something placed on an agenda, it typically is. So I think that this is a good addition to the bylaws.
Comments by board members? Mr. Calabrese?
I had, first, just, you know, I personally, I'm not really sure that it's necessary. I understand what you're saying, but I also would think that it would be common courtesy if one or two board members want something on the agenda, that they would talk with the chairman and get it placed on the agenda. I haven't been here long enough to go through that procedure, but that would be what I would expect. I think that's the expectation. If something needs to be on that night, you know, we have the two-thirds vote for a reason. So I don't think it's necessary to add this. I mean, I'm open to hear other options.
I'll just comment that agendas are difficult to manage in terms of items that we have to address and items that we should address, or that the majority wishes to address, and I could see a difficulty if three different members each said, "Well, I want this item on the agenda," and to concur, and the next person says, "But I want this item on the agenda," and to concur, and et cetera, et cetera. Three items could be added to an agenda even if that agenda is full with other items. And although I'm sure that some will disagree with this second comment, I believe that topics that have been asked to be added to the agenda over the last several two years have been included in agendas. Probably the exception to that is, some members have asked to discuss management initiatives, instructional methodology-type topics, and since they are not under the control of the Board of Education, probably those are the only ones that I've said, "Well, it's not our job to tell teachers how to teach," and so those kind of topics we have not included. But I think the other topics we have eventually gotten to, whether it's food service or exit interviews or whatnot. So I believe that the current process in which myself and the superintendent work on agenda, and we ask the Board Vice Chair and the Secretary to make comment on developing an agenda, and then issue it, I think is a reasonable process to stay with. Comments that people wish to make? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would agree with Mr. Calabrese's statement that it seems that it would be typical protocol that if two or three members of a board request, that it should be put on the agenda. And that is what I think going into a board, you would assume, would occur. However, it isn't, it isn't being practiced with regularity. And I think that is the issue at hand. There needs to be some sort of regular practice that everyone can rely on to be held in the same manner at all times. And that's why having it in a bylaw makes it firm and clear for everybody, that everyone is following. It's not sometimes we do it and sometimes we don't, at the discretion of an individual or by the majority. Again, the idea of this is to make sure that the minority voice is heard on topics, because often minority concerns may not even be a topic that the majority is aware of. So this honors the concept of, let's hear what the issue is, let's, as a board, discuss it. And if we don't like the idea of having it be within 35 days, because there's so many topics, we are, I don't think this language makes it such that it has to occur at the next meeting, but is more, it should be placed on an agenda as soon as is possible, meaning not in five years, but perhaps in the next two, three, four meetings.
Other comments from board members? Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair to Mr. Calabrese. You're correct that it should be sort of a courtesy, and if a couple of board members ask for something, but the fact that I've put this amendment through historically has shown, since I've been on the board, and I can only speak for the two years I've been on the board, that always hasn't happened. Chairman, Dwyer's point, our agenda does get chock-a-blocked at different times in the year, but unfortunately, I think certain things have just never even made it to the agenda.
Thank you. Any other final comments that people wish to make, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I think something needs to be distinguished here between, one, Mr. Dwyer started by bringing, I mean, brought up the notion of what are appropriate topics for us to talk about. A few other things I'd want to throw in there is that when our agenda topics involve staff time, I think that's a whole level of consideration that this bylaw would not take into account. If a board member should decide, and with two close people say, "I'd like to revisit a curriculum that's not even on the curriculum schedule, and I'd like it scheduled for 35 days from that moment," that is an unreasonable expectation. It's circumventing the work of the board, and yet that is precisely what a bylaw like this sets up, and which precedent has been set in the last two years, for a board member to make exactly such a request. And in that event, what happens? It is at the discretion of the chair, in consultation with the other two officers, that such a decision was made. That's not being put on the agenda, and that's exactly what we have our officers for. It's not that voices haven't been heard. A voice has been heard and a decision has been made, which is very different from not hearing the voice to begin with. I think it's something that we, as a board, should be very sensitive to, that there have to be those types of reasons, and we do need to listen carefully to one another. But yes, there have been some precedents and decisions have been made, and just because you might not be happy with the decision does not mean it wasn't a well-founded one.
Any other final comments from the board? If not, I'm sorry, Ms. Carnell, you get the last comment. It's your amendment.
Through the chair to Ms. Cannelly, I agree with you that it can't be unreasonable request in terms of asking for something that may require a lot of staff time and an unreasonable amount of time. But I think some of the items that we've asked to be put on the agenda, and I say we, as a board, have not always made it, and have not been where the staff has needed to put in excess amount of time. I guess, as an example, I believe that we have to come back by Friday afternoon with questions on the budget, and that's a pretty lengthy budget. So... So we're putting in our time to do that, and sometimes, staff members have to do the same thing, to make an educated decision.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? This is a bylaw change that requires six votes. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 5, Section 3, which is shown on enclosure number two. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn opposed, Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Mrs. Pitco, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. The motion fails three to six. The second one is enclosure number three, and that is recommended by Mr. Llewellyn. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 1, Section 2. Do I have a motion? Mr. Llewellyn? Mr. Llewellyn, do I have a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick? And Mr. Llewellyn, your motion, do you wish to make a comment?
Please. First, I'll read the amendment. As a guide to appropriate use of data in the decision-making process, board members should, and it says number two, "Request data as a board, not as an individual, unless the information is readily available and will not redirect staff time." What I'm proposing adding is, all requests that do not require significant time will be provided within 10 business days. If requested information is not provided within 10 business days, then the request will be added to the next scheduled board meeting agenda, as a motion for approval to provide the requested information to the board. As it stands right now, there is no mechanism to add something to the agenda that's been requested. And the genesis, I believe, of this amendment that was put forth, I believe it was by you, Mr. Dwyer, last go-around on the, on the change of the bylaws, was that, you know, requests would have to be made by the board.
I think it was Mr. Confortito, but I voted for it, yeah.
Sorry. So I think that this is trying to add a mechanism to effectuate how that information will, will get there. I've got several examples, but I'll take some other folks' comments first.
We normally go to the person who seconded the motion out of courtesy, and then we'd go to questions from the board. Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you have any comments that you wish to make?
I would just agree. I think it's good to have some sort of a mechanism. I think the details, I'm flexible on, but the concept is true, if we want to improve transparency and good communication.
Okay. So you raised your hand, so Ms. Pitco?
Through the chair to Mr. Llewellyn. Can you be more clear on what you mean by significant time?
Well, that was the ambiguous phrase that was placed in before. It, it's not well-defined as to what significant time is. I would like to try and quantify that, but I'm not sure how I could. But I've got a couple examples that I can walk you through, that have, you know, occurred over the last year or so, that I think can help illustrate. So if folks would like, I can do that. The first one I wanted to talk about started in March of last year. And it was a request that was made to look at some information about the use of school accounts, or not, and, not to go into the details, but a request was made in March for information and access to review some checking accounts. I believe it was September, which was six months later, that Mr. Fattabean and myself were given access to the information, looked at it. But I do really need to, you know, thank Dr. Tidal and Ms. Munsell for changing the policy, or the practice, in terms of check approval at the school level. Ms. Munsell had stated that as a result of a lot of this investigation, checks now come to central office for signature, rather than being signed at the local level. But the fact that it took six months to get to such a good outcome, I think is partly why this should be here. Second request, or a different issue, was as it relates to IREDDI. Back in November, I had asked for a simple printout from the IREDDI system. IREDDI is what we use to do our math evaluations at the elementary level. Three or four days later, I received a response that, given the Thanksgiving holiday, that, you know, after Thanksgiving holiday, you know, further consideration would be given. I then followed up after the holiday, asking for a status. And on December 4th, I followed up, I've yet to receive a response. So I did look through all the IREDDI manuals. The report I'm asking for is several clicks of the mouse. I would define that as not requiring significant time. It is a report that every administrator should have already looked at, and is probably printed out on all the desks, but was not necessarily, you know, I haven't received a response. So I do think that requests should not be ignored, or delayed, and that, given, some structure needs to be put in place, in order to effectuate the compliance of requests. It appears as though that members of the public through FOI have almost more rights than an individual, if we're needing to vote for things as a board. So that's the support.
Let me make a couple of comments, if I may, and then go back to the board. One of the truisms in Board of Education state law is that individual members do not have the right to direct the school district. And this bylaw amendment would essentially give one board member the right to direct the work of our superintendent, and of our staff. And that can only be done by board, in a board meeting. I disagree with my colleague's comment that there is not a mechanism. And in fact, I think the March 2015 example that he gave, Mr. Llewellyn asked for all 17 schools in his initial request. And that seemed to be a very, very difficult thing to comply with, as those are all individual checkbooks, that had to be brought to the office, read through, redacted for student information, and then prepared. When he realized it, he changed his request to only one school. And with that change, that's what resulted in the, both he and Mr. Fattabean came into the office and went through that school's checkbook. I was prepared and had planned on putting it on the agenda, because he had made the request. And as you may recall, as board members, I think not the two new one, two board, board members, Dr. Tidal had said, "That's just too much staff time, based on what other work that we have to be, have done." So I was prepared to put that on the agenda, because he had responded. But in the meantime, Mr. Llewellyn had changed his request, and that changed the superintendent's response. So I think there is a existing mechanism, and that this, this amendment is not needed. On the IREDDI, all of us received a detailed memo on the rationale that the staff had on preparing the reports for IREDDI, and the format that they did. And that they don't think a competing report would actually be helpful, or, and in fact, would be confusing to parents, to have two different formats of report. And at the same time, what the board did not know until tonight, is that over the last three months, November, December, January, actually, ever since the state, a comment, you know, "Look what the state did to us recently." Well, "Look what the state did to us recently by passing the allowance for us to get into the state insurance plan. It saved us a substantial amount of money." So this is one instance where they did. But when they passed that, it took a lot of staff time to focus on that change. And Dr. Tidal decided that his focus should be on that, and not on looking at the IREDDI, because he had already made a conclusion on IREDDI. So, so I think there was logical reason for that delay, if in fact, you want to call November, December, a delay until, till January. And so, again, I think just on the fundamental principle that individual staff should not be allowed to direct staff time, that this would essentially allow, I, I don't think this is advisable. Other comments that people wish to make?
Just make one comment, or let the board members talk first.
Mr. Calabrese, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I just want to clarify. So with your, obviously, through the chair there, with Mr. Llewellyn, you're not striking anything from number two, you're adding-
That's correct, it's additional language.
It's additional language. So I'm not, just from what I'm reading here, in that, "Request data as a board, not as an individual, unless the information is readily available and will not redirect staff time." I think that there already gives us the power to do that as an individual, if they determine it's not going to redirect staff time. So I don't think the red is, is necessary. I understand, I appreciate the way you laid out, you know, the two cases there, the two instances that you had. But, you know, I guess that, I would assume that the school staff thought it was redirecting too much time to get back to you sooner than they did. Obviously, they haven't gotten back to you with the IREDDI one, but with the, the one with the accounts and everything, they, they did eventually.
Right.
So again, I just don't think it's-
And of course, this is a, did they get back to you, because they got back to you with a memo saying, "Here's why we don't advise it," or because they didn't give you the information you asked for, then quote, "They didn't get back to you." But anyways, Mr. Llewellyn, you wish to make a comment?
Sure. So to clarify what you had said about revising the request for the information, going from all schools down to some, I had done that on April 16th. So it was five months after I revised my schedule, that I was able to get access to sit down with Mr. Fattabean to review them. The, there were 20-plus emails trying to schedule a time. It wasn't convenient for a litany of reasons, which I won't go into. In terms of looking at the IREDDI, you had made the comment that you didn't want to confuse the public. I asked for that to be distributed to the board. Whether or not it was distributed wider than that, is at the discretion of the administration. It is a report that is generated literally through several mouse clicks. I mean, the manual for IREDDI is available out there online. So, you know, that doesn't redirect staff time. I think that the issue I'm having here is, the district, I believe, has taken, and correct me if I'm wrong here, please, has taken the IREDDI results and scaled them for a Fairfield score. And some board members are interested in seeing, what does that really mean? How do we fit on a national perspective? So without being given access to information, it's, it's difficult. Yes, I have an explanation. And I said, "Great, I'd love to see the analysis." But I didn't get the analysis, I didn't even get a response. So I think that is why information, or that is why parameters, I think, do need to be set. You know, the past does, you know, the past that I've demonstrated for you, does support-
So, Mr. Llewellyn-
You can't stand here anymore and listen to this.
Please, let me finish. Mr. Llewellyn, you did get a response, you didn't like the response, you still have the right to still ask for that information. And if you do, under our current bylaw, if the superintendent sends you an email saying, "For good and just reasons, I don't want to give you that information," then I would put it on a board agenda to discuss whether the board itself wants to ask for that information. So there is a mechanism under the current bylaws. I would hope that you would represent that, that that is, that is true. Mr., Dr. Tidal?
Mr. Dwyer? I just had my hand raised for a while, and you have not seen-
If I, out of courtesy, would you mind if our superintendent talked?
Not at all. He had said one-
Dr. Tidal?
There's some history here that goes beyond this most recent, these most recent requests. The reason that the board had to amend its bylaws the last time, is because some board members were taking it upon themselves to demand large quantities of information from the administration, on items that were not scheduled to be heard by the board, were not board agenda items, and we are always responsive to those requests. We spent hundreds of hours responding to requests from individual board members, on a whole variety of topics, and it was getting out of hand. And for, I don't know what percentage of the requests, 95, 85, 100% of the requests, we have bent over backwards, redirected hundreds of hours of staff time on fishing expeditions that certain board members had made. And as a result, a majority of the board finally got fed up and said, "We need to put a stop to this." That's why the bylaw had to be tweaked, because it was out of hand. Yet, we killed ourselves to get this stuff out. And the implication that we dilly-dally around, and don't take these requests seriously, is just not accurate as a whole. That's one point. The second point is, okay, you can go on every single one of these. The board, when it voted on the district improvement plan unanimously, back in July, there was a discussion about when would the board review the data for the assessments that are in the district improvement plan. And there's like hundreds of them, right? And the decision was made that we would review those once a year, right, in October or thereabouts. Some people want them reviewed every quarter. And IREDDI, as well as a bunch of other things that are on there, are on that list. So the board decided that IREDDI results would be reviewed by the administration, with the board and the public, once a year, as a summary. So happens that it'll probably get reviewed in April, because we've got a status update, so there'll be something. So this is no more than an end-around. On the board's previous decision, was to review these results, because nothing would then stop any board member from wanting to see any interim assessment of the hundreds that are in that plan. So that's why I've been wrestling with this issue. And we have a lot of other things to do, as were mentioned. But I don't want people getting the impression that somehow, we've been non-responsive to individual board members' requests. We have killed ourselves to meet individual board members' requests. And if we need to go through and get all that data, and bring that in, and show all the requests that were made, and how many hours responded to each one of those, other than it would take a long time to do it, I don't think it's any question that we have been extremely responsive to board members' requests. And I've been very reluctant to say no, and have it on an agenda, have the board have to vote on it. So I just can't sit here any longer-
Thank you.
-at loud, saying something. So I don't mean to be disrespectful, I just want to lay it out there, on behalf of my staff.
Mr. Patton, your comment?
Not sure, not sure how I follow up that. Thank you, Dr. Tidal, for your, your honesty, as you always are. I'm just going to say similar things that I've said on similar bylaw amendments over the last two years, is that I served on bylaw revision committees for three or four organizations, public and not. And many of them had attorneys there as advisors. And pretty much all of them, the attorneys always advised to, if you're going to revise bylaws, you should, you know, stay to, you know, don't argue semantics, clean up language, and do not ever create specific restrictions in your bylaws that may affect the limitations of the effectiveness or the power of a future board, because, just because one board may want something, then two years from now, a new board may, may change it, and you volley back and forth. And so a board should be a universal organization that's, you know, has the same power and roles, year to year, not dependent on its members. So for that reason in and of itself, I'm not in favor of this amendment. And I'm definitely not in favor of putting restrictions, like 10 business days or something, while it may seem logical. Just anytime you put restrictions on, on things, it just invites trouble and, and opens up more cans of worms.
Any other final comments that board members wish to make? And on that side of the table, on this side of the comment, Mr. Llewellyn, it was your amendment, do you want to make a final comment?
Thank you. And clearly, you know, I'm going to disagree with Dr. Tidal as to the nature of it, because I'll see it from a different perspective. But at the same time, I think that asking for very simple requests, like things that exist, that are all subject to any individual of the public requesting under FOI, such as a printout from an IREDDI system, it, I guess, is difficult to understand why that request would be denied or ignored. I don't think that that's unreasonable. As a board, we have a fiduciary responsibility to, to represent the students in the state, from the state. And, you know, one of the issues is, we can all wait, but we haven't seen a lot of metrics of late. And we do, as board members, receive calls from parents, trying to understand, you know, what does the scale score mean? There was a lot of question, we were receiving a lot of questions back in September and October, and, you know, that's the genesis of the request. I thought it was a simple request, and I tried to keep it as simplistic as possible. So that's my rationale.
Okay, thank you. If we're ready for action, the recommended motion is- Okay, thank you. If we're ready for action, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 1, Section 2, which is shown on enclosure number four. All in favor, please. Enclosure number three. Four is the next one. Thank you very much. Enclosure number three. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Lou McCormick, all opposed. Mr. Llewellyn, please, all opposed, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Ms. Maxon Cannelly. That motion fails 3 to 6. Thank you very much. The next item is from enclosure number four, which is a motion brought forward by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 2, Section 3. Do I have a motion, Ms. Maxon Cannelly? And do I have a second? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
So this bylaw amendment is, reflects two things. First, the subtraction from number four regarding the school building committees and moving it down to number five is basically being a more accurate reflection of the reality that the representatives from the, from the Board of Education that serve on those building committees are acting as liaisons, not as voting members. So that's just being technically accurate. Secondly, number six, if you'll notice, I did take into consideration the changes, I know Mrs. Gerber expresses, and as well as another member, to separate out number six, which involves, this is the one that Mr. Llewellyn had asked before, that's the reflection of what we'd called the Fair TV liaison. And so that, in fact, it is actually to the Cable Advisory Council, to separate that out, because that can be a member of the public, and in fact, up until now, has been a member of the, what is now the Fair TV Commission. And so that's that change, and then the renumbering down below. So these are two separate changes for two completely different reasons.
Mrs. Gerber, do you wish to make any comment? Questions from the board. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Question regarding the movement of item 4D to 5D. Was it ever the case where board members were voting members of the bodies? It's never been the case?
Not, not to my recollection. I'm-
Not of building committees, no. The building committee is established by the first selectman, and we simply send a liaison to those meetings, but there, we've never been voting members. In terms of, the Board of Ed does not have the right to appoint a voting member to the building committee.
And so that's never been the case, despite the language having been the case?
Yeah.
So should we have been a voting member? Was that the original intent? We just never were?
No, I believe this is just a mistake.
It was just an error?
Just a mistake, that's all.
Okay.
The town charter puts the responsibility for creating, recommending names to the building committee in the first selectman's office, and approval of those committees in the RTM. Any other questions on this particular amendment? Mr. Patton?
Just to clarify, I think we talked about this last month. The, and so in the new number six, it says the board shall appoint a member of the board or a member of the public. So does that mean that the Board of Education, as a board-
Votes.
If we choose is, right. So we, if we do not choose one of ourselves, we would choose a member of the public and vote on that member of the public?
Right. Well, I believe, I mean, Mr. Dwyer had already solicited for interest. None was expressed. But this is different from four and five, in that this is not just a chair appointment. It is in fact, actually, it is in fact, actually, a board vote.
The bylaws of the Cable Advisory Committee state that the Board of Education may appoint a voting member. And so the first time we were made aware of this, because they said it was the Board of Education who may appoint, I put it on an agenda. And you might recall that Tom Flynn, the other Tom Flynn, we appointed as a member. He has since resigned, and we have an opportunity to reappoint as a board.
Okay. That's, I just want to make sure that that changed that way, how that person was appointed, is not changing.
And, and I did put the request out. As you know, this is a board that meets all over a very large region, and it's rare for a Board of Education member to say, "Yeah, I'll travel hither and thither to be on this board." And so I've not received any requests. And so it's my intent to, once this passes, to go to the Cable Advisory Committee and ask if they have a member of the public that they-
Fair TV Commission.
Whatever they call themselves.
Well, no, you're going to the local Fairfield body.
Yes. Whatever they, if they have somebody they think would be good to recommend to us to go onto this board. If between now and then, one of you suddenly say, "Oh, I'd love to travel to Berlin so I could attend these meetings," make sure you get in touch with me. Any other questions from the board? Okay. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 2, Section 3, which is shown on enclosure number four. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Thank you very much. The final one to act on is, recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 7. I hope this takes a long time. Just, we need Webster's. Do I have a motion? This is Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, so you're motioning. Ms. Carnell will second. Do you wish to say anything more than one word on the spelling?
No.
Anything that you wish to make a comment on? Fair enough. Any questions from the board? If not to correct the spelling, thank you very much. Back to the board, that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to Article 7, which is shown in enclosure number five. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, 9-0. Thank you very much. New business, item number 7A, acceptance of the Stratfield Elementary School project. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the Stratfield Elementary School project 0510121EA as complete. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, do I have a second? Mr. Calabrese? Dr. Tidal, do you wish to make a comment? Or does Mr. Cullen, or who?
And it's pretty routine here, required for the, for the town to get the rest of its reimbursement. The board needs to accept this project as complete. Those of you that have been on the board for several years might recall, every year, in terms of the goals, this was on there, accept the Stratfield project as complete. And for a couple of years, we couldn't bring it to you because there were still a few lingering issues. The building committee was still taken care of. There was still money in the budget, and they have taken care of all the issues. The project is complete. We are very pleased with it. And this basically will unlock some reimbursement from the town, I mean, from the state, to the town.
Any questions from the board? This is a voting item for a financial decision, so, a facility decision. So is there any member of the public that wishes to come forward to make a comment on the Board of Education accepting the Stratfield Elementary School project that has been open for about three or four years?
Four.
Four.
(inaudible)
Okay. Seeing nobody coming forward, back, back to the board, that the Board of Education accept the Stratfield Elementary School project. I won't read the number again, as complete. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. We do have another bylaw amendment, but since it had not been presented at the prior meeting, we put it on as a first reading. So Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, please present your recommendation.
So my recommendation is here. I would like to make a personal note before I do this, because there was some confusion or questions from the public. So I'd like to clarify what happened at our last meeting. I indicated an interest in looking at public comment, asked for help doing so. Knowing of the public's interest in it, Mr. Dwyer indicated that, you know, we should notify the public that we were meeting, which we did. There was not a formation of a specific, a separate committee for this, so that when the three of us, I was fortunate that both Mr. Calabrese and Mrs. Gerber volunteered to talk with me about this, and we were happy to have this conversation in public. I would like to say one personal comment about that, and then I'll get into the content of this, which is that it has come to the board's attention that this conversation, which was not a meeting, was tape-recorded. And I would like to say something about that to this board, and I'd like to say it through the chair, if I may, to the public, which is that I find it unconscionable that a member of the public would, and I'll use the word, make a cowardly decision to secretly do such an action. I would have been happy, we were doing the meeting in public in the interest of full transparency. And for this person whom, whose anonymity I am willing to preserve, even as she was not willing to show me any type of courtesy, or Mr. Calabrese, or Mrs. Gerber, was rude, and again, I will use the word, unconscionable. If there had been a desire to tape-record, I think out of politeness and basic consideration, the three of us should have been notified that we were being tape-recorded. Instead, it was done secretly. And so my earnest plea to the public, let me know if you want to record a conversation with me. Don't be a sneak. That said, we had our meeting-
Before you move on, there is no legal requirement to do so. I think Mrs. Maxon Cannelly is saying, "We're talking about courtesy here, that you don't tape-record somebody without at least telling them." But that's a courtesy statement that Mrs. Maxon Cannelly is commenting on, not a legal position. Sorry, but go ahead.
Quite all right. So in looking at public comment, what, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Calabrese, and coming, starting with me, our overriding interest was to provide clarity to the public. And that as we looked it over, what we liked, didn't like, I don't know if this is the best version. I can see this being something that perhaps, once it gets tried, if the board supports it, that we would want to revisit. But this was our effort after, I would guess about an hour and a half of conversation, that while we liked maintaining A, and that the public comment on agenda items, we wrestled with that quite a bit. But we thought overall, what we were looking for in terms of clarity is, when may the public speak? And we ultimately resolved that with the red text of old business and new business, maintaining the public comment that starts the meeting on agenda items. I will say, and I will take first responsibility as English teacher, I should have caught such a basic editing mistake. And so that on the draft that we actually vote on, I would just like to notice the board, that the sentence crossed out, "A member of the public can only speak to a topic once at a meeting," that was crossed off in error. I take responsibility for that. That was not intended to strike that. We're not trying to open this up to two bites of the apple. Again, that was a mistake. The idea was to provide clarity to the public, what may you speak on and when. And there's the beginning of the meeting for whatever topic. Again, we did like the fact that the meeting starts with that, as opposed to making people wait until the end. But that, in terms of when during a meeting, are people coming up or not, we thought it best to clarify it, and we were happy with this compromise, old business and new business. So that's where the language came from. And again, my apologies for the error with the strict, the strike-through on that sentence.
So you'll revise this for the next meeting, which will be the 28th, the next regular meeting, and that particular sentence will no longer be struck out?
Correct.
Thank you. Any, Mrs. Gerber, do you have any comments that you wish to make? Any questions from the board? Well, of course, this will be a debatable item at the next meeting. Mr. Patton, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Thank you for the, the three of you for putting together this little group discussion. I was unable to make it, but I guess my question-
There's a tape-recorded version, if you'd like to hear it.
We need another wise guy on this board, like a... Through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I'm curious, were there any suggestions from the public that stood out in terms of things that you might have taken into consideration, or whatever? I mean, obviously, this just seems to kind of clean up the existing thing, and not, you know, we were maybe hoping for, I don't know, some sort of shade of brilliance.
That's what we were looking for, and that we were actually surprised that ultimately we came down to just this is a simple solution. There were two members of the public present. There were also, Mr. Dwyer came in for a bit, and Mr. Convertito dropped in as well. I think one thing that actually was enormously helpful was Mr. Convertito reminding, there can always be that moment of clarity, that someone kind of pulls you back and gives you the reminder. And the reminder he provided was along the lines of, we're not, this, the purpose of our meetings, they're in public, but they're not public meetings. And we have business to attend to. We shouldn't be looking to have, and now I am paraphrasing, you can't have public comment at every single item stopping through the, through an entire agenda. We have, and as we've discussed, we have very full agendas. So that was useful. But the two members of the public had no criticism of this. One member had other suggestions that wouldn't have been part of this bylaw, which I actually found sort of interesting. But there were no suggestions in terms of language to this from the two members of the public who were there.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Was it ever reconsidered to allocate some amount of time to entertain topics not on the agenda? And the reason I say this is because, you know, I constantly had to remind myself that this, we are public servants, in essence. And therefore, as public servants, don't we do our job best when we understand what the concerns of the public are, not just what our agenda is? We should only be reflections of what the public is looking for. And therefore, having the courtesy of actually hearing some of the public that may not otherwise have an opportunity to express themselves to the board would be beneficial during an open comment session.
And we had talked about that a bit. And the one thing that we overwhelmingly liked were the town hall forums that we have, that those is a moment, because we liked the notion, not only of the public making us aware of something, but that opportunity for give and take, we actually thought that was a superior option. And that we would hope and would express, I think all of us would express to the chair, the desire that those would continue to be scheduled. One member of the public had thought about the idea of, what if we started adding it every, you know, quarterly as a 7 to 7:30 special meeting? I mean, obviously, the town hall forums we've had have gone a couple of hours. But something like that, I thought was an interesting suggestion that the public could regularly count on. And that wouldn't be for the staff to occupy. I mean, as you say, as a reflection of the public, that would be for us to hear and engage with them. But we really found that the town hall forums were actually a better vehicle for doing exactly what you described.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Well, I like that idea. I guess my one other question is, are the town hall forums recorded and publicly available? They are. Because I think it's also important for the public to be able to hear each other, and to be able to share on that. And I guess the other question I have is that the town halls, we are not in session. So it doesn't occur as frequently. So that would mean that someone would have to harbor an issue for six months. And is that timely enough? And perhaps doing 15 minutes or 30 minutes at each of our meetings would suffice, and the town hall could be for larger issues when people really want to come out and have a discussion or what have you with us.
So you may recall that our goal is to hold three of them in a year, taking the summer out. That means three within a, let's say, a 10-month period, which, so I don't think there's a prospect that somebody would have to, quote, "Wait six months," because I think they'll be spaced fall, winter, spring.
May I respond?
Mrs. Gerber, do you? Go ahead.
I guess my concern with that is, at the end of the day, when, if we wait three months, it's not necessarily timely anymore, the discussion. So allowing people to come forth every so often and express themselves, we can work it into the agenda more easily than having a super wide array, because it's not necessarily relevant at that moment. It might have been relevant six months ago. And three months, and as you said, three times a year, or what have you, it's not a requirement, right? We do that. I guess if we had a, something within our bylaws that said we will take public comment three months, and then it becomes more formal, then this is a process by which we openly say, "This is the time." Otherwise, again, this is just at our whim. And I think that is what I, you know-
So we will be debating this back and forth. I'll give Mrs. Gerber the last comment.
Mr. Calabrese had his hand up, too.
Do you also wish to make a final comment?
If you don't mind.
Who raised their hand first?
She did.
Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I think one thing that's important to remember is the fact that members of the public can contact members of the Board of Education at any moment in any day, 24/7. They can send us an email. They can call us. They can send us a letter, if they wish. So to say that they'd have to sit on something for three months or six months isn't really the case, because we get plenty of emails. We get plenty of phone calls. We get stopped and stop and shopped, and people ask us questions. So I, it's not as if we exist in these bubbles, and the only time that someone can bring something up to us is in their allotted three minutes at a public meeting. There are multiple opportunities for members of the public to share their opinions, and they do that quite often. So I, I think that, that is ample to me.
Mr. Calabrese, you get the last comment.
Thank you. I was going to point out the same thing, that obviously, there's other avenues that people had. But we did discuss, I remember, I specifically brought up, you know, trying to put in a time period of, you know, open comment at the beginning about anything. Other districts do it, Westport specifically. The only problem with that was, it was brought to my attention, again, you know, Mr. Convertito had mentioned that, you know, it's the, the public doesn't need to comment on every little thing. A lot of times in the past, from what I understand, you know, the public would get up there and be a-
be abusive. And some of these other districts have language in there that says, you know, if you're abusive, you're thrown out, basically. You know, I don't think, we don't have anything, I don't think, like that right now. I could be mistaken. But ultimately, that, we went round and round with this and, you know, limiting it to new items, new agenda items and old business, pretty much covered everything.
Thank you. Again, this will be on the agenda for January 28th, provided that Mrs. Maxon Cannelly gets us the updated one in time to go out with the board packet. Onto approval of the minutes, recommended motion, first reading, I'm sorry, the first reading of Policy 5514. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, that's also yours.
Okay. So this involved a lengthy bit of cleanup work and we were a little bit embarrassed to see that we had looked at, okay, not the other two members, but I had been part of looking at it in 2013 and had allowed some of this language passed. But this was, this is a recommendation from Joanne Ryan to us and in term, and also as a reflection of some new statute. One thing I'll point, so obviously, you have a chance to look at the language and as always, I invite your questions. If you have them now, otherwise preferably enough in advance that I can be sure to check because once this involves Board of Health and medication, I want to be sure that my answers are accurate. One thing that you will notice on the last page, in case that jumps to your attention, that's that word adopted. As part of our policy audit, we were reminded that that in fact is the proper verbiage to use regarding the Board of Education. We do not approve policies, we adopt them. And so that's just a change, that's one of many changes still to come from the policy audit. So I just wanted to point that out specifically in case anyone had that question. And otherwise, just, Mr. Patton actually asked me to bring this up. There's another policy paired with this, 5515. Some of you remember it, we referenced it as the Good Samaritan policy. We will be looking to strike that policy as being redundant, once this one, well, as part of the passing of this. However, Joanne Ryan could not attend our last meeting and we had a couple of questions about it, that her proxy at the meeting was not completely comfortable with answering and wanted to check. So we held off on striking that policy until we could get that checked, just in case anyone is looking through the manual and wonders.
I assume that the board is aware that whenever we adopt a policy that supersedes another one, we vote to approve the one policy and then immediately following, vote to strike the other one. So you're suggesting that the agenda of the 28th will include both? First one action and then the other, pending conversation with the Board of Health?
Pending conversation with them. And then I would leave that to the discretion of the chair if, without a first read and then a second meeting, we strike that one or if we can do them both at one, I would leave that up to you. But I'll get you that language so you see what it is that we're striking.
I probably would not want to have two policies in existence that might conflict with one another. So I'll plan on having both of them on here unless, and of course, the board, if they review 5515 and for any reason wish to postpone action on it, you'd be welcome to do that at the meeting. And the other thing is, I took it from your comment, that any changes of substance to Policy 5514 probably would result in a postponement of action so that you could check them out with the Board of Health. A minor change, we could do it at that meeting, but anything of substance, you probably, that would force the policy back to the committee.
Right. So preferably, if I could get it enough in advance, I could have the answer at the table.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah. Through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. I just, in this whole list here with the approved and adopted, approved, reviewed and approved, it seems like the reviewed and approved by the Board of Health comes and then after that, reviewed and adopted. But has it been approved by the Board of Health this time around? Just because it seems like one would come and then the next would come a couple of months later. Like, we would approve it after the Board of Health.
Good point. I don't know.
Okay. I just was curious.
Mrs. Parks is making, doing a great job of not making eye contact with me right now.
So you will check.
I will get that answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
And if it can't be put on a Board of Health agenda, then we may not see this until February.
Okay.
Right? Because you will want to have their approval before our approval. Is that correct?
I assume so.
Okay, thank you.
I might be able to answer that question now.
I don't know. Go ahead. As the liaison to the Board of Health?
I am the liaison to the Board of Health and at our meeting the other night, we discussed this thing. As far as I know, and again, Ms. Parks can correct me if she remembers differently, I suppose I'll find out next month, they're waiting for us to do our vetting process. So once we have approved it, they are pretty much good to go. They were concerned more with the redacting of the second half of the policy.
So you probably should take Mrs. Gerber's comment and remind them that all other revisions to this seem to have followed the pattern that they approve first and then we approve second and see if that doesn't cause them to put it on their February agenda or a January agenda.
You got it.
You know, just show them the.
The current.
The current way it's been happening. Thank you. If nothing else on this topic, then on to top number eight, approval of minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the December 8th, 2015 regular meeting. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerbert, do I have a second? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? Mrs. Gerber, do you have any comments? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly? Does the board have any comments? If not, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the December 8th, 2015 regular meeting. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, opposed? Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Llewellyn, and the motion passes seven to two. Thank you. Superintendent's report, number nine.
I did it earlier. A large budget.
Committee liaison reports. Do we have any reports from the members who attend committee meetings or our liaisons to meetings? Ms. Pitko.
Just give me one second. Okay. From SEPTA liaison, the, SEPTA is holding a middle school and high school teen dancer, says, calling all SEPTA middle school and high school teen dancers, attend this new program and find your inner groove. We'll adapt the music and moves to your interests and abilities, so don't be shy. And their dates is Saturday, January 23rd, 30th, February 6th, the 20th, 27th, and two dates in March. And there is one more announcement. SEPTA is having, ring in the new year with SEPTA, it's tomorrow, January 13th, at 7:15 at Taco Loco.
Is it? Any other comments from liaison members or committee members? Mr. Patton?
Following it more on the Board of Health, one of the things that they just released and we had a brief discussion on, just looking for the title here, is there is a new well-being survey that was created with the state of Connecticut. I'm not sure how many towns had to kind of buy in to be part of this survey, but it was definitely, everyone in greater Bridgeport area, including Trumbull, Monroe, Fairfield, Bridgeports, Shelton, I'm probably forgetting something, but it has fascinating statistics in terms of, does the town's school system meet the needs of your child? You know, are goods and services available in your town that meet your needs and all sorts of, you know, is it a great place to raise children, et cetera? And Fairfield certainly scored higher than the other towns in the greater Bridgeport part of the survey. I believe the Board of Health is going to attempt to put this on their website within the next month. So I'll have a further update on that or people can contact me if they want to see this study. It's pretty lengthy. It took a very long time to do it. It was done by phone as opposed to like being surveyed and stop and shop or something like that. But lots of interesting stuff. And again, Fairfield did very well. And then I just also, I would say it's an open board commenter now, but it's the same thing. The nursing supervisor, who has been with Fairfield Board of Health since, I believe, 1999, Joanne Ryan, as Ms. Maxon Cannelly has referenced, is retiring. And so the new supervisor's name is Jill, I'm drawing a blank on her last name.
Mitchell.
Mitchell. Thank you. Very nice lady and we look forward to working with her and wishing Joanne the best of luck in her retirement.
Any other comments, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Just very quickly from the PTA Council, there was, one of the VPs reminded the group and I remind anyone paying attention, that the window for giving any feedback on the social studies curriculum, which can be found online, that that window will be closing soon. So if anyone was not able to make any of those forums, just to the public, that'd be great if you could do that, just give your feedback. Don't necessarily worry about the phrasing of the question. And also just reminded that the eternal plea for people to please become PTA members, that as always, numbers are down and we're looking to get that up in all of our schools. And that if your kids are in multiple schools, please try to join all of them. So, thank you.
Nothing else to open board comment? Any board members have a comment that they wish to make? Okay, three shots at the apple.
Sorry. And I didn't do it earlier because I didn't want to pile on, but I did want to reiterate Mr. Patton and Mr. Calabrese's comment, that for the first year, I went to Carolin. And I have to admit, when I think back to my child's fourth grade strings concert and then finally, middle school, truly beginning to not just enjoy watching my child's hands move, but actually enjoying the music, Carolin was on a whole different level. And I just, to Dr. Tidal, to extend to his staff, it was amazing. And what I found especially interesting as I sat for the concert, was seeing previous board members who no longer even have children in the system, sitting. And I had no idea what was about to come and I found that, all right, a little bit odd, until I sat through that concert. And it was absolutely astounding what the staff did with that number of children, just a seamless hour and a half of music. It was a pure pleasure to be there.
No, I, Dr. Tidal made the presentation on the health insurance and called out a few people, but this was not a study that occurred just with two or three people. There are a lot of people who worked on this within the administration and I think this board owes a debt of gratitude to our administrative staff who from time to time, people ask, what do they actually do? Well, you know that phrase, well, they earn their pay today. I think they earn their pay every day, but in this particular instance, they went well above and beyond. So I thank the administrative staff who carried this ball forward. I think it will take pressure off of programs and other things that the whole community values. Recommended motion for adjournment, that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Carnell is the second. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you.